Everybody have their mics back on?
Yes.
On purpose.
All right, I call this meeting back to order. Does anyone inform Ms. Morello that we're back?
Where is she? Is she in or off?
I think she was back.
Okay, first item on the agenda, discussion and action on district-wide mask policy. I would like to remind everybody that, you know, the eight of us are here to make a very important decision. We've probably got eight different opinions on exactly how masks, when they should be discontinued for use at the school. So I just encourage everybody to have open communication today. State any concerns you have, and at the end of the time, Mr. Morales will be making his recommendation. I would like everybody to keep in mind that, I know for me personally and all of us, that making these decisions on the mask isn't a lighthearted decision. You know, there's so many things to consider. We have to look at, you know, what the public sentiment of our community is. That's one thing. We have to look at the health of our more vulnerable teachers. We have to look at TEA guidelines and CDC recommendations. So the one thing I would like to say is just because we discontinue the use of masks does not mean that we change the quarantine policy. So I would like to say be careful what we ask for. So I know all of us would like to take these masks off right now, and that may be what we end up doing. We may vote to do it immediately, but everyone keep in mind that the quarantine policies do not change. And if we discontinue masks immediately, we still risk having to quarantine healthy kids for 10 days at a time. So those things need to be taken into consideration. It also needs to be considered that COVID active cases in the county is way down right now. Our community is doing pretty good. So I know that Mr. Morales took all those things into account before making his decisions, both the positive and the negative. So just wanted to kind of lead into any discussion and any concerns anyone has. Now I'll open the floor.
Do y'all want to hear my reasoning?
Yes.
Guys, I've been gathering information for quite a while trying to figure this out. First thing I want to do is I want to congratulate our staff and our students for keeping us safe all year. The kids have been incredible wearing the masks, and our custodial staff has been incredible with cleaning and keeping disinfectant. So we have done a very good job. I want to say we've done a better job than most school districts that I know of. Some have been very better than us, but anyway, they did a great job. I don't take this decision lightly or this recommendation lightly. I looked at school districts all over the state, and we are all over the place, guys. We have some removing masks immediately. We have some going to the remainder of the year. I mean, they're all over the place. Even regionally here, we are all over the place of what people are doing. So when I made that decision, I'm making the decision what's best for Perryton ISD. This is my recommendation, what I think is best for us here, because we do look at our counts. We look at what we have in our school right now. We do a lot of different things. I can tell you this year has been like no other year, and I've been in the business a long time. Guys, things change every day. I mean, we look fickle at the school district because one day we're telling them something, and then another guideline comes out, and now we had to change it. The governor says this, we had to change. I mean, we have so many people that are over us that really make those decisions for us. So again, everything changes a long time. As far as the science of masks, guys, I don't think there's any hard science. Either they help you, they don't help you. I mean, we're making decisions not really knowing all the science behind things. You know, that's the crazy thing. But I can tell you this, our number one priority should be in this district is to keep kids in school. If you remember, when we first got to COVID, we wanted to get our kids back. We wanted to keep kids in school. I think we want to keep our staff safe. That's number two. We want our kids in school. We want our staff in school. We want to keep everybody safe. You could have read off my sheet, Monty. We still got to follow CDC guidelines, whether the governor says we don't have to wear masks or locally we have, the county says you don't have to wear masks. We still follow CDC guidelines, which says you have to be six feet for more than 15 minutes. And if you're exposed, then you could be sent home seven to 14 days. That's still in effect, whether you're wearing masks or not. One of the things that helped us with the masks, if you remember, if both parties were wearing masks, then only the person with COVID had to go home. No one else had to be exposed. We had one incident at our elementary over here where we had to send home 15 kids one time because the 10 and under, we weren't wearing masks, and then all of a sudden we started making them wear masks. I mean, parents aren't happy when you send their kids home for 10 days because they've been exposed. We're still into that. We don't get away from that just because the governor says that. I don't think parents would be very happy when we do that.
James, do you have any sense, do we have any sense on when those additional restrictions will come off?
The last thing that came out of CDC was that if you've had both, you've had, when you get the two shots, and it's been 10 days after that, then you don't have to wear a mask anymore. That's the latest thing that's come out of CDC.
What about the additional rulings on exposures and quarantines and all that stuff?
I don't think any of that's changing, as far as I know. Well, it might change, but right now, we have to follow their guidelines. Okay? Staff, guys, we have staff that are fearful right now. I mean, elderly staff that are saying, hey, I'm scared. And some of y'all may have gotten those phone calls already, you know? And it's people our age that if they get it, then they can get pretty sick, you know? A lot of people say this is a farce, but, you know, I know I've lost five close friends that were my age or older that would have had a longer life if COVID wouldn't have came around. So I do think it's out there, and it is serious, you know, that we need to look at that. So I can see teachers doing that. But the other thing that teachers are afraid of is that they've already used their 10 COVID days. They had COVID or they were exposed. And if we don't wear masks, then there's more of a possibility that they could be exposed again and sent home. And then those days will come out of their personal leave, or they'll be deducted pay for not being at school. So that's a fear for those teachers that have already had COVID, because we just said 10 days for anybody. So it could be a financial loss to some of those. Staff, I want to thank Monty here. United has volunteered to give all of our teachers shots. Maribel has talked to all our staff. We have 110 staff members that want the shot, and it's the Johnson shot. And that's the one-shot deal, on one-time deal. But you got to wait 10 days after that for it to go into effect. So if we remove masks right now, and they're getting their shots Friday, they're susceptible. And they're wondering, you know, are you thinking about that, and do you care about us? So I think we need to take that into consideration. I think the high schools at 8:00 to 10:00, junior high kinders from 10:30 to 11:00, 12:30, and the Williamson Rite is from 1:30 to 3:30. But we appreciate United wanting to come to our building. And that way, anybody who wants a shot, my guess, anybody who needs a shot here in Aquitree County will be able to get it within the next two or three days, because I think they're doing the deal at the expo too. So anybody that is wanting the shot, I think, will be, will have that. But then again, we got to wait that time after that shot for them to be immune from that. So that's the people that are scared. I did talk to all our medical professions. I talked to Monty's wife, Jimmy. She gave me both her professional opinion and her personal opinion, and they weren't the same. But I had to go with the professional opinion, by the way. I talked to every local doctor that we have here and got their opinions. And guys, both of them are saying we probably need to wear masks a little longer, okay? And that's the medical people in our community saying, hey, we don't think we're at herd immunity right now. We think we're close, but we're not there. So they did that. I talked to my administrators, and I gave them all the information that I'm giving you all. And basically, they said, Mr. Morales, I think it's a good idea to be on, judge on the safer side, and let's go a little longer, you know? So that's what I'm getting feedback from everybody else. We did poll our staff, Darren polled our staff. 60% of our staff are saying remove the masks immediately today. 40% of them are saying leave it on. And you know who the 40% are. The 40% are the ones that are fearful of getting COVID. So, you know, I don't know how you weigh their deals. I'm going to tell you this too. It's a lot easier to make a popular decision. Hey, that's easy. Let's make a popular decision, let's remove the masks. The hard decision is trying to make the right decision. Popular or right decision. I think that's what we got to look at. And, you know, major concerns, here are my major concerns. Protecting our vulnerable staff. Two, protecting the vulnerable students that we have still on campus, campuses. Having as many students and staff here for state testing, because if we start getting sick, everybody's leaving. Teachers and students are both leaving. And to protect our UIL and other teams that participate. You know, we lost some teams earlier this year with COVID, because I want to see those kids be able to continue. So anyway, those are the things. So I'm going to make a recommendation. I'll make two recommendations. First recommendation is that we remove the masks. I think we need to remove the masks. So that's my first recommendation to you. The second recommendation to you is when we remove the masks, is the timing of that. My recommendation is to keep our masks on until April 5th, okay? Let me tell you why. This allows time for those who've gotten their shots to go into effect. Shows we're concerned about our staff and the protection of our staff. I think the next one is spring break is coming. There's, we had a increase or a spike after Thanksgiving, when everybody went home, saw their families, and they came back to school, we had spikes. Christmas, we didn't have a spike. I don't know why. I'm thinking, everybody was saying, don't go anywhere for Christmas, and some people listened. Spring break, guys, I'm thinking they're going out. I mean, it's, they're going out, and they're going out without masks now, because the governor said you don't have to have it. We don't know if we're going to have a spike or not. But if somebody got COVID on the last day of spring break, it takes 10 days till you see the effects sometimes. If we go all the way to April 5th, we would know that prior to that. So I'm looking at, if they got COVID that last day, we would know by April 5th before we pull the masks off. So that's my reasoning and thinking. I do recommend that we remain closed to visitors for the remainder of the year, like we've been doing our campuses. No visitors. Again, I think after April 5th, then it's going to be optional whether you wear a mask or not. If you want to wear a mask, you can still wear a mask. If you choose not to wear a mask, you don't have to. So that's it. And then I think the other thing that we need to also put in here is the district reserves the right to implement the mask policy if we get spikes again. Okay?
What threshold?
I don't have any threshold in my mind. It's probably we get a 10 or 15% increase. That's kind of where I'm looking at now, if we do see spikes and things come out. The whole thing, guys, here, there's going to be some discomfort. There's always discomfort in that. I would feel really bad if somebody got this, because all these kids are going home to older parents. They're going home to grandparents sometimes, grandparents raising them. And those are the people that we're trying to protect with our masks. I know everybody has a right to do what they want to do. If I err, even when I err sometimes on snow days, icy days, bad weather days, guys, I'm always trying to err on the side of safety. And I think in this same decision, again, here, I'm trying to err on the side of safety. What is the safe thing to do in this circumstance?
Ms. Morales, I had prepared several bullet points in my head for my reasoning and thought process since the governor made his announcement. And I don't have to go through them, because you just did.
Good, good.
Exactly my thoughts down to the date.
Wow.
On where it was for exactly those reasons. Once you started doing the math from a, from a when spring break was over standpoint, we get kids back in school. We've seen throughout this whole, hate to even use the word pandemic, this whole issue that we've had, that those that have been making most of the rules several levels above us are epidemiologists and doctors and scientists that have very little experience in risk management. Once you get down to the ground level, there's no such thing as zero risk.
No guarantees, yeah.
This plan lessens risk. It's never zero. But in my mind, as I was thinking through this before I walked in the room here, balances both sides of safety, of reducing risk as much as possible, but still providing the freedom for our staff members and our students to make their own decision. There's no wording in what you just said that says we have to not wear it. If someone doesn't feel comfortable being without a mask, put on a mask. If they don't want to wear one, take it off. But after such a date, and I agree with your timeline.
Good, I appreciate that.
What I like about the timeline is it protects us from a potential spike when kids come back from spring break, but at the same time gives us hope for more normalcy for end-of-school activities, graduations, prom. You know, let's get past this and be done with these masks, because nobody wants to wear them. And if we jump the boat here and have another spike, then we could potentially be wearing masks during all those activities if we get to have those activities.
You know, which is the same thing, guys, how things have changed on us. Here I go, okay, we can put them back on if we get a spike. Well, again, there's, you look fickle of what you're doing. I'd rather continue up. We've had these masks on for a year, right? Two more weeks to be a little safer to me is not an issue. It's a discomfort for those people that don't want to wear them, but for the safety of the people that are possibly could get COVID, it may be worth that extra two weeks.
I started quite a bit with this decision, this summer, our faculty, this with my sister, my daughter out in Tennessee. And I think this recommendation covers both worlds. It's the safest thing for us to do. Like you said, I'd hate, like Monty just stated, to pull them off, and then we have a big spike after spring break, and then we...
Then we're putting them back on.
And then, you know, if, even if we do this after April 5th, and we still have a big spike, we will have tried to do the right thing, okay? So that's how I'm going to vote this recommendation.
Well, guys, you know this. You're going to get phone calls either way. I'm going to get phone calls either way, because we're not going to please everybody. But again, you know, you've got to have, I've got to be able to look myself in the mirror and be able to say, hey, I'm doing what's best for this community and this district.
Let me take the opposite side here, just for a second. I want to commend the administration and the staff for what they've got us through here. I can look at some of the disasters that are going on in the other states. We've put education first, and then lived with things that have come along, so I think that's great. I want to thank you, and I want to thank the rest of your staff, that that's the approach we've taken. On the other hand, I would say that the science on masks is not there. And I think that we can, my point would be, we can forever find excuses to keep wearing masks.
Yeah.
I mean, you're...
There's no guarantee.
... federal government wanting to do it for another, I think Dr. Felty doesn't want anybody to shake hands for the next 20 years. Okay? So I think, I see, I still see this, I understand your points, and I understand April 15th, you've got some rationale to do that. What's that? April 15th?
Fifth.
April 5th, I'm sorry. Okay, let me not say the wrong...
Don't give us more time.
Yeah, yeah, more phone calls. I just think it's time to get rid of them. Your staff, your staff who's on the ground looking at it, it's not, it's hard to run from fear. You can't get away from it. And I think we've got, that's the mechanism here that's driving all this. So I think the staff, the kids, we know the risks of the kids for the most part are just mental.
It's mental. And I did have medical professionals tell me that.
Yeah, and I think everybody that's actually looking at science is actually saying that. So my opinion would be, my opinion would be, we do it immediately.
I agree with that, and like I said, back to the, I think it's a choice. If you want to wear a mask, then put the mask on, you know? I think, like I said, there's going to be some people that continue to wear masks. I'm not a pro of that. I think it's time to...
Well, and I think that, I could, I don't know, but the spring break aspect of it, I understand it. But, I mean, we've been living for eight months. I mean, everybody's going, I mean, you know, I mean, I see people everywhere, nobody wearing masks outside of school. I don't know that we're going to see a spike after spring break, because I don't know. I mean, I've seen people in mountains, they got to wear masks there, you know? So if they're going to travel, they're going to wear masks. But I do, I do see our staff getting it on Friday. I do see it. I could see where, you know, 23rd or 24th, but I don't know that I can get to April 5th.
And I think it would be, because my other date, because I played with these dates in my head too. My other date would be the 29th, would be plenty of days for them, their 10 days for their shots to be in effect.
Yeah.
And I guess I would kind of be in agreement too, that maybe if the teachers that did choose to get shots basically had some opportunity or some time to be able to have those kick in. What is it, a 10-day?
It's a 10-day.
10-day period?
Two weeks.
Do what?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. 10 days, two weeks. For that to be able to kick in, then I would be okay with removing the masks immediately after that.
And I understand your comments about masks, the efficacy of masks is, what, 2%? And the studies that the CDC just put out... They're on the high side. Go ahead. Of above, or below when they've tested different areas. But what fed into my thoughts was also the rules from several levels above that we are still required to follow, that whether or not we believe in the masks, whether or not they're working or not, we still have to follow the rules to keep kids in school. And that's, this waiting until everything is effective and going out balances the status. Back and forth between providing, where we're not going to have, there's less chance from a risk standpoint of having an issue past that date, but it also gets us toward kids can still stay in school, be able to take tests, be able to learn. We're kicking out entire classes with spring break issue, and I understand that we're not seeing issues around. We haven't, because we've been over it for how long here?
Yeah.
Since July.
Basically, we've been over it, and we've been wearing masks. So even the incidents when with the, that occurred in the school system, we had masks on Wes.
Mm-hmm, I understand that. But I also know that we have rules from the CDC and TEA that we're bound to.
Yeah, that's why I'd like to give it...
And no matter what we say, we can't get around that. We don't make that decision.
Yeah, I would like an answer for that one, if we can get to it through whichever channel.
You have an answer.
TEA's been spineless, we recalled that earlier, but...
But as of right now, that's, those are still laws.
The rules are what the rules are.
Laws.
Yeah.
Regulations we have to follow, so to me, you got to get rid of the mask. We've got to wait till after, one, we get some immunity for our staff members, and two, we get past a potential blip. And then...
There will always be a potential blip.
There is, but we're putting our finger down the line.
Well, it's liability issues, what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
We're managing it.
And for James to...
Putting our date on this one right here. Saying we're done with blips as of this day.
Well, and I saw some, one problem, there's so much, there's so many unknowns, there's no route or...
That's right. That's where I've lived, is unknown.
You know, and that's the point I believe Wes was trying to make, and I'm trying to make is, you know, it's not about the science of the mask on whether you believe they work or not. It's the rules that we're bound by, that on exposure, you're quarantined for 10 days if you're not wearing a mask.
Yeah, we could lose an entire classroom.
To me, and we can discuss this some more, anyone can, but everyone's had a chance to speak here. And what I'm hearing from Mr. Morales is he is recommending until April 5th. Now, I also heard from Mr. Morales that he wanted to give the, all the teachers here getting the opportunity to be vaccinated on the 12th, time for their vaccines to kick in. That would take until the 26th, which is a Friday. So an alternate date we could look at on no mask would be March 29th. So we have April 5th, we have March 29th, or we have March 10th, on the people that want to get rid of them today. Is your recommendation still to go with the 5th, or would you like to consider compromising and going with the 29th?
I'm okay with the 29th. The 5th covers spring break, but which we're going, we don't know...
Two weeks after spring break.
Yeah, we don't know if we have that or not.
29th would only give us seven days after returning from spring break. So I understand the reasoning going on April 5th, so...
For our first motion, I would move to remove masks, the first portion.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion that we set a date to remove masks as being mandatory for Perryton ISD. Is that right?
No, I was, we were splitting the motion into one, to remove masks, two, to set a date.
Just remove masks.
I'm accepting a motion that we set a date, not the date.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Okay, don't we have to have a motion, approve motion to remove them before we set a date?
Well, if we have a motion to remove them, can we take them off right now?
Depends on the date.
I was making a motion to set the date to remove them.
I'll make a motion to set the date for the 29th.
29th.
What, so all, Monty, you have enough available to cover all staff that would like?
We have 150 shots available for Perryton ISD staff. If what Mr. Morales is telling me is that he has 110. Now, keep in mind, a lot of the staff has already been immunized because they were, they met other guidelines. So if he is correct in that there's only 110 that have signed up for them, I've got enough to cover that.
Okay, and that's what we got.
And plus, they're going to have the deal at the expo for anybody that didn't get that.
That is the hospital having that at the expo, and I believe those will still be with, no, or those, I don't know. I don't know if those are the Johnson and Johnson...
I think it's Pfizer. It's Pfizer.
It is the Pfizer. That's right, I think I heard that. But yeah, they've, yeah, they've got a bunch of them.
Pfizer's two rounds, right?
Yeah, Pfizer and Madonna are two shots, Johnson is one.
And how long did we give staff to reply? I mean, is this a couple weeks we've been working on together?
We've been working on this a long time.
Okay, so we've, everybody's had an opportunity to sign up for it.
The clinic that we have this Friday, whether they sign up or not, so if an employee on Friday says, you know what, I changed my mind, I want the shot, they can just walk in, you know, and go get the shot. They don't have to sign up. As long as shots are available to them, they can take time out of the classroom and walk in and go get that shot.
And I do need to say this, guys, these people have not held off on getting the shots. This is the first time they've been available to this group of people, because the hospital was working with us prior to that of getting people shots that were 65 or older or had extending circumstances. And I got mine.
We had all these employees that got their shots, and then we had additional, we had a balance.
Yeah.
Thirty more other employees that were able to get shots as well.
And the second round took up the first shots again, so that put it back. So this is really their first opportunity to get the shot.
Well, I just don't want to get in a situation where we're picking a date based off our staff getting their shots, and then a week later, you know, we get two people saying, hey, I didn't know anything about it, or, you know, I wondered, and I didn't get on it. I just want to make sure we...
I think we've sent emails out several times.
They've all had the opportunity to respond.
It's going to be done on site, so I mean...
Yeah, they can change and run it.
And I do want to thank the hospital working with us for our other employees early, and Dr. Manzal. Well, a lot of them have, but anyway, I know the hospital gave me mine. But anyway, I'm good with either date, guys.
We got a motion in a second for the 29th.
We have them, okay? So we're all in agreement that we would like to remove masks. I have a motion, and who's the second? On removing masks, removing the mask mandate on March 29th. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 6-1. Okay? So as of March 29th, masks will no longer be mandatory, but they will certainly be optional. Your choice if you want to wear them. Okay? Discussion and possible action on hiring Wright Elementary principal for the 2021-2022 school year. Mr. Morales?
I recommend that Jody Chisholm be hired as the Wright Elementary School principal for the 2020-21-22 school years for a two-year administrative contract.
She will do an excellent job, and I would make that motion.
Okay. I've got a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further... Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor of approving, uh, the hiring and, uh, two-year contract for Ms. Chisholm as Wright Elementary Principal for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Mr. Morales, discussion on student dress code for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
Okay, guys, this is just, I need to get your all's opinion, your feel for this. Darren has been working on this for a while, they've had two meetings with the committees. Uh, I didn't even know we were working on this and then, uh, somebody had told me that, that started this, uh, before I ever got here, looking at the dress code and redoing it. So Darren, uh, picked up the ball for us, uh, finished that up. I want to know where you are on some of these, I, did everybody get to see the dress code?
I did, read both of them.
Read both of them?
I have copies if you need them.
You do have them, I think Todd, do you want one, Todd?
Please, just.
Tyler would like to have one. Uh, guys, there are two versions, one is a real liberal version of making a lot of changes and one is
Not really.
Not really?
It wasn't that much different. Not that much.
And then the other one's a little conservative, that's according to Darren.
This is liberal, this is conservative. The differences are in red, the blue is things that are changes from an current policy.
And we had two high school students on it.
I would like one too, Darren, if we could.
We had some parents on it, uh, we had Mr. Alan Herbert on it, who was an old-time high school principal. Been here a lot of years, he was on it. And so we had some input, but I want to know if there's some sticking points with you all on any of the things that are in there. And that way, when we go back to committee, we can say, hey, the board's really not comfortable with this change.
We got in there and these sticking points, I can tell you that committee members sometimes even within themselves couldn't make up a decision.
Yeah.
And I was just kind of the facilitator of it, but that's exactly how I was on the council meeting. I'm pretty
Well, and I want to sound, I understand the students that check. Louie Martin, I understand that and I understand, you know, but they go to ballgames, I see them in the stands. I mean, they have different color hair and our kids have to abide by a different set of rules. Then you'd have a sticking point, well, they get to that, why can't we do that? And I get that, but I get
Well, I can tell you the, the administration's opinion on that, we don't want one more sticking point keeping those kids from graduating.
You're talking about Louie Martin?
Yes, once they have decided that that's their option to graduate, we don't want hair color to be an obstacle when we graduate.
Yeah, I, I can see that. And I, and I can see that, but I can also see the other flip side, you know? You know, but I guess you gotta look at the big picture.
Well
Other than that, I'm not, I think it dresses some of the conservative side and dresses some of the fashion issues of whether this happens in five years from now, you know, past
Oh, yeah.
Basically, the difference between conservative and liberal is, uh, whether to allow boys to wear earrings, is that correct? That's the only real difference.
That and whether or not you accept nose, nose rings.
Yes, for the girls, yes.
Small, clear nose rings.
Not hoops.
Not hoops.
Yes.
Studs.
I'm getting out of touch.
The difference on if whether all tattoos should be covered or all large offensive tattoos. Thus allowing for these small little one-inch square on their wrists.
Or ankle or wherever.
Not have, not requiring those to be covered, that would be one difference there.
Well, we're not excluding anybody now because they have a, they have a small tattoo in their
They gotta cover them with Band-Aids.
Okay.
And so it's just whether or not they have to cover those little ones.
And it's the same way it's been with the earrings and the nose rings, if they had one, they're having to wear a Band-Aid on it.
If the red is, what's red? Just the differences. So there is a policy currently on tattoos?
Yes.
That they have to cover? That's written, so there's nothing in here that says what the original policy was? This is just the new policy that's been, I was misunderstanding that.
Yeah.
Just, so there's literally a third one we need to have to compare, to make a good comparison.
Yeah.
Need to have current.
One other thing that is a difference is, um
Leggings.
Leggings, yes.
Yeah, the leggings.
One of them
The girls.
One of them says they must be covered, the other one says that they must wear an outer shirt that covers two long socks.
So much stuff is pre-tied.
Yeah.
And that was another one that our committee was back and forth and back and forth on.
I don't have a problem with the leggings as long as they get it covered up.
I don't either, as long as they're wearing
A shirt or sweater or something.
That they have to be covered to feel up in their end. And there's some that are saying not required to be covering and simply put it to a modesty standard, which modesty is in the open heart. And that leaves it up to administrator discretion to say, hey, that's, yours is a little too much.
Too short.
But that create, but then the other side of that is that creates some awkward conversations, so.
Well, one, one of my things, guys, and like I said, I was a high school principal for way too long, twenty years probably. Uh, the one, the deal with the pants, you know, the ripped pants that the kids wear now? You know, they gotta have something underneath there to cover it up. As far as, the best thing that I heard that I hadn't heard in twenty years was mid thigh. You know, you used to do the hand hang down, you used to do two, two inches above knees. Well, girls are built differently, some have long legs, some have short. So if we just say mid thigh, I think we're covering things pretty well.
That's been a little, an ages-old debate and one of our committee members found that in another policy. Like he says, you know, a different body style, somebody's
Keeps from doing the shoulders, surely.
Shoulder, sure, I call them dinosaur arms, but
Well, on a tattoo deal, I don't know that you want to get, because if you just go with larger offensive tattoos, who gets to decide whether it's offensive or not?
Campus administrator.
Campus, he makes the call all the time.
Then, then you're getting more problems there and to me, almost, I mean, I don't care what, either way, whether you have tattoos or not.
Well, the thing I'm looking at really, really is what are, what are our community norms? Because you're gonna have principals come and go, you're gonna have superintendents come and go. What are the norms of the community and what do they want? And then as I look at that, I look at, okay, what are businesses aligning when they're hiring people? Are tattoos keeping you from hiring somebody? Are nose rings keeping you from hiring somebody?
For, for years, I fought our tattoo policy, uh, making people cover their tattoos. And you, it just got to the point where it wasn't worth fighting anymore because so many people had them and then plus there were health concerns and perishable departments on covering the tattoos and well, if they can wear them, why can't I? And so I, I went to the same policy at our store. Uh, if they're offensive, uh, then you have to cover them. And I am the sole judge of what's offensive and what's not.
You're the judge.
So if I, if I have someone tell me it's offensive, it's offensive and you're, you're gonna cover it, so. So anyway, uh, and so it's something that the administrators probably don't want to deal with, but it's, it's doable.
Well, let me, let me give you that deal with that principle because Alan and I are both on the same page on this. You know, let's don't put a role, a, a rule in there that we're not going to enforce. Why have it written in there if you're not gonna enforce it? And then the other one, why put a rule in there, uh, that may just be a rule and then now I gotta enforce it?
Right.
You know, and really not be there. And that's, that's where we get to the tattoos, nose rings, hair, I think hair is the other one in there? Boys' hair to the bottom of the
We've extended the length of boys' hair. Originally it's, uh, to the top of a collar like this. None of our kids are wearing a collar like this, so there's It becomes a judgment issue more than anything. Uh, so we've moved it to the top of a t-shirt.
Okay.
The bottom of the collar.
Bottom of that collar, whatever.
T-shirt collar.
Collar.
James, are we doing?
And we're not even enforcing that right now, I can tell you.
Are, are we doing this because of, are we reviewing, redoing this policy at this time because of a complaint?
No.
Or are we responding some, to something?
I think they started this at the junior high before I got here, is that where it started, Darren?
They, they started it, there was that complaint at a board meeting last year. It's kind of lost, we shuffled a lot of other comments that night.
The plastic nose ring.
Yes.
I remember that comment.
And so that, at that point, junior high had already started a community committee and then COVID hit. And then another committee was reformed and had some attendance issues and some other technicalities. And they basically came back to us and said, you throw up our hands. And so at that point, I
He got assigned to that, um Just to finish it.
Pulled another committee together and we've met a couple of times. The thing I'm most proud of, of this, is the wording and the simplification. If you can take the old document, which is still posted on your website and look at it, it's redundant. It's angry. It's, and it's, it's just got an old-fashioned tone to it. This explains it short and sweet, this is how we are, what we're doing, and these are the things you can't do.
And then guys, I'm gonna tell you, we have a lot of these policies and then they start affecting elementary and Williams Wright and everything. Guys, these policies aren't for that. These policies here are for junior high and high school and we want both buildings to be together. So when you leave one building, you go the next, the rules are the same.
And there are a few things in here that it's written that, you know, exempted the lower grades. The lower grades are gonna base theirs off of this because they wanted some guidelines too. That was the thing we got out of that meeting where we were told that the committee wasn't, got them up with any, our administrators were like, we need something. We need somebody that tells what rules are
For me, I could go as far as supporting, uh, the liberal policy, which as we said, is not very liberal. Uh, basically, it would allow boys to wear earrings and girls to wear nose studs. Other than that, it's the same as the conservative one. Uh, so long as we gave, uh, different extracurricular activities, sports, for example. Uh, the right to hold their, uh, their participants to a higher standard. You know, so if, uh, if the athletic director doesn't want, uh, his kids wearing earrings, uh, I say he has the right to make that decision. If, uh, if he doesn't mind, that's fine with me too, but
Does that not open another can of worms?
I think, uh, you know, as a general rule, uh, you know, when our kids are out representing us away from the school, uh, our coaches and, and teachers have always had the right to hold our kids to a higher standard.
Yeah, we, we can
You know, when you get off the bus, shirttail in, or if, if a coach is requiring, uh, a tie on game days.
We keep in mind that participating in extracurricular activities is a privilege.
It's an option, it's a privilege, right.
And if the rules are stronger and you don't agree with those rules, don't
You don't have to participate in that extracurricular activity.
The libertarian side of my brain flows really strong when I look at this.
And that is pretty much standard procedure in all the other policies I look at. They have a clause in there, can be stronger for extracurricular activities, so it's, it's
And I'm gonna tell you guys, just me, this is old-fashioned me. Our kids are going out and they're representing us, they're not representing themselves, we should hold them to a higher standard. That, that's my personal opinion. If they're representing Perryton ISD, we want them to look good, look sharp and be very courteous when they're in places.
Well, as far as the dress code goes for, for, for across the
Regular schools.
To me, I mean, I like my kids being a part of the school to have the dress code. To me, the whole point of it is so there's not anything distracting from learning.
That's the key.
And I don't see, I mean, I don't see anything in here that's really
Gonna distract from learning.
I mean
On, on either policy.
I mean, that, it's, you, if you're standing in the hall and somebody walks by, nobody's like, oh my God, look at that. I mean, none, I mean, as long as we keep away from that, I think we're probably
It's not hurting anybody.
Yeah.
Well, that's what the principals are saying, why do I want to enforce something that I can't see that affects education?
Right.
The kids' learning or distracts or takes away from it.
And, and I feel like too, with all this kept in mind, we definitely, I feel growing up here, being a student here, graduating from here, just always felt like we held ourselves at a better standard than most other school districts. And that always served us well and it served me well after I graduated. So we need to keep that in mind as well.
Well, I, I can tell you this, guys, kids behave better when they're dressed better. I can tell you that from every prom. I'm thinking, man, this guy's acting halfway, what's the deal here? Well, he's dressed up tonight and he's trying to fit that dress, so I, I agree with you. I think how you're dressed does affect how you behave. I do agree with that.
Are you looking for input from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there was something that, somebody said, hey, let's go. I think facial hair was on there too, I don't know, I haven't even looked at that for young men.
We're allowing neatly groomed facial hair.
So we can't
Even when they can't grow it.
No, you can't have the beard wet here. A lot of, a lot of policies I've seen out there said, uh, half inch. You know, you can't have more than a half inch growth off your beard or your mustache. But I can tell you, most principals are going, I don't want to deal with that. If a kid can grow that hair.
Somebody said no frizzy atoms and I said, our students won't know who that is.
Yeah. I, I just don't want y'all to have any surprises if you get some phone calls, some parents going, you know, why are you even visiting this? Why do you allow this?
So basically, if any of us have any major concerns with anything on here you want us to link?
We need to voice it now so Darren can take it back to the committee.
I could be okay with either policy.
I mean, I would lean that way, but I don't see a couple of different points to it too. Couple of points of conservative I support, so.
Yep. All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I appreciate you all coming on your lunch breaks or for keeping you all late. Meeting adjourned.
We've covered a lot of stuff.
Yeah, we did, it's a lot to cover.